Well, thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Tim Kearns. I'm with True North Companies. And with me is Kyle Ray. Kyle is the gentleman passing around hard copies of the information in case you can't see them. And what we wanted to do is first give you some background, me being somewhat the elder statesman and having been here a number of times addressing the district, but give you kind of a background in terms of what's happened with the Health Plan Reserve Fund over the years and actually really trying to explain what it's all about. Because I think if we can help give you an idea or a sense of what this is really all about for a self-funded plan, that will help as Kyle actually really walks through the numbers. The Health Fund was actually, the Health Fund Reserve was actually set up via board vote back in March of 2004, became effective in 2004. And the reason that frankly, we suggested that and working with Marsha Tang and CFO at the time, we wanted to set up what we called a reserve policy that would allow for an orderly accumulation of funds in order to meet the district's needs long-term. And that's vitally important. And it's not only meet the district's needs, there are compliance laws in the state of Iowa under code section 509 and 509A that are vitally important that the district actually files an actuarial report with the state every year. Since the time in 2004 when this policy was established, it was done so in order to again cover the cost that were necessary for the district to have in the case of what we called catastrophic years. And that's for your self-funded health plan. It covers medical, dental, and vision claims. Again, it's been around longer than 2004, but the policy was established in 2004. What goes into establishing what we call funding rates? And I think that's important for everybody to understand. Now, we call them funding rates for a self-funded plan. The more common term, if you will, out in the marketplace is really premiums. But this is not a, this is not a fully insured plan where there's an insurance carrier. The district, if you will, and the employees and all of the participants, you all are the insurance plan. But what goes into that funding rate is your administrative services cost, utilization management and large case management, again, your claims, medical, dental, prescription, and vision. And then there is a very important consideration here, and that's your stop-loss or reinsurance. You may, you may hear those terms and they're interchangeable. You purchase two coverages for reinsurance. You want, one is specific, and it covers large individual cases. And every year, there is an evaluation process that we go through with the district to evaluate what levels should those be set at. The current level is $225,000. The district's taking a risk for the first $225,000 for every individual. But there's another policy that you buy. It's called aggregate. And it's established based on what the actuaries and the underwriters that write that stop-loss policy say you should have or you should expect to have for claims. Now, you don't purchase that at the expected or the anticipated level. You actually purchase that at a higher level. The district has always purchased that at 125%. So they've established a corridor between what's anticipated and what the premium or what the level the actuaries have said, this would be your maximum amount, and that's 25% over, over that anticipated level. You're required to purchase both of those policies under Iowa State Code as a public body. So again, that's actually the, behind claims, that's really the second largest cost related to the health plan. You also have some internal operating costs here at the district. There's wellness plans offerings that you've had, didn't have them in 2004, quite frankly, but you have them, you have them today. And then there's other benefit costs, related costs such as our fees. Those also get incorporated in, into that funding level. And then there are any reserve dollars that are necessary and appropriate as the district might feel appropriate. So that's really what makes up the policy. And again, it's really to anticipate future, not just what it is today, but what, what are you going to need in the future. So with that, again, this policy was established. We suggested, and we still continue to suggest, that the district have what we call a floor or a minimum level of that, of that reserve. We believe that should be six months minimum of your costs that are related to this health plan. It would also incorporate in there any claims that had been incurred and not either reported or had been sent to the third-party administrator for their payment, but just haven't been final for payment. There are always claims that are in the pipeline because people will rec, if your plan year ends as it does on March 31st, your fiscal year is June 30th, but your, your plan year for, for the health plan is actually March 31st. There are always claims that were incurred just prior to March 31st. And again, they either haven't been submitted to the administrator that's going to pay those claims, or they're there and they're, they're looking into them some more. They just, just haven't been paid. So that's got to be taken into account as well, just as it does for the 509A that you submit to the state every year. Then we talked about the maximum risk. Then what we call contribution stabilization. If there are excess funds in there, those funds at some point in time can be used for other purposes related to the health plan. Now, they, once they go into the health plan, they have to stay in the health plan. They can't be utilized for anything else. So there are funds that were in there and accumulated over, over these years that you utilize again for what we call now the premium, premium holidays. And then there's any additional cash flow that the Board of Education feels appropriate to, to have in the Health Plan Reserve. Now, I want to go back, I want to go back to that aggregate policy for just a minute. And let's just say your claims in a year were two, or $10 million. You would need in a year's period of time to cover that gap between the 25% extra, another $2.5 million. So you would need to fund at some point in time that additional $2,500,000 into the fund. We said six months. So if we use, again, in our example, 10 million dollars a year, the cost, you'd need to fund for two years, you'd need to fund $5 million. And we're saying that should be, that should be your minimum threshold. And why two years? What's magical about two years? Well, back again, when we established this policy, there was something in effect related to collective bargaining. So if you had a catastrophic year where you were using that $2.5 million a year, you were funding at the $10 million level, you needed, you had claims and your cost up to the $12 million, $12,500,000, you'd need that money in your reserve to cover that extra, that extra gap in there to cover those costs. Why two years? Why is that magical? Because again, you were in collective bargaining. You couldn't just change plan design. You couldn't just change funding mechanisms if you were. So it was really important that if you again had another catastrophic year, that second year, you, you were at least protected for that. Again, if you were in the middle of a collective bargaining agreement. So that's why we said as a floor. But that would still put the district at, at some peril because then you'd be potentially at a reserve. But luckily, back in the early 2000s, the district began to experience some better than anticipated years in terms of where the funding were, was set and where the claims actually came in at the end of the year. So the district began to accumulate some funds. And then over a period of time, again, up to the 2012-13 year, the period of April 2012 through March of 2013, that's when the district began to utilize, quote, "the premium holidays" and actually began to draw down. Because there was a fair amount of accumulation of funds in there due to good experience, due to good, due to good decisions that the district actually made because they changed third-party administrators a number of time in, times in that time period. You adjusted your reinsurance premiums to take advantage of some better, better cash flow. And you entered into contracts with your stop-loss carrier that in this day and age, we have a, we have a terrible term out there called a laser, where you're taking the risk for the two, first $225,000. That doesn't stop the carrier from saying, this person's going to have a transplant, or they're going to, they're a hemophiliac and they need to have a higher level. They can do that, and they often do. But you entered into a contract a number of years ago, I think about five years ago, with a company called Sun Life who writes your stop-loss. And they have in there that in, after that first year, there will be no new lasers. You are protected against that. You pay a little bit more in additional premium for that, but you are protected in case of a very, very catastrophic situation. So again, the district made some very good decisions over the years, and you accumulated a lot more funds. So with that, and this is really all intended to give you some background in terms of what these numbers are going to look like, and what we believe through the actuarial study, you could or you might not want to do as a related to premium holidays. So any questions up to this point? Clear as mud?
Well, no, there actually are some questions. I didn't know you were going to be ready. You're ready to take questions right now?
I just kind of on the background, but not really on the numbers at this point.
Okay.
No, I don't think it was Wallace. Oh, wellness. Sorry, wellness cost. Sorry. I need to enunciate better.
Y'all strap in because I'm from Georgia. Wait till you get, hear this accent. It gets only worse from here.
Director, may I tell you?
No.
Okay.
I think I've got a question, a couple of questions, Tim. One was the wellness, even though it, it may or may not be part of what you're presenting, can you just say in 15 seconds, is that working well for the district?
I believe so. And I think you're, early on, you had very, very good participation in your plan, much higher than what we would typically see first year.
Okay, great. That's great to know. As I was thinking about you and your role, because you act as a consultant to the district also, right?
That's our job.
And I wanted to make sure that there's no conflict of interest in you presenting this actuarial, in doing the actuarial study and in presenting it relative to your other roles in supporting the district.
We actually went outside and we hired an independent actuary to put these numbers together.
Okay. So you're comfortable with, you're simply presenting the information that somebody else developed?
Correct.
Okay.
Um.
I won't bother with the last couple of questions. They're kind of esoteric. Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I'm going to turn it over to Kyle, and he's going to walk you through the process and the numbers.
So as Dr. Tatum, Tim mentioned, the purpose of it, we know, was to establish whether or not the income that we were going to fund was going to be enough as the actuary sees what the expected claims will be over the next five years, what they're projecting, and how much are we going to be dipping into that trust. So we looked at a five-year period, starting with year one being this year. So as we go forward, you'll see that the first year will be July 2018, 2019, all the way out to July 2022 to June 2023. As part of the, the premium holidays that the actuary took into account, the first year, there were three months of premium holidays, followed by three years of two months, and then the final year, year five, having one premium holiday. Now, keep in mind, a premium holiday, that means that you're just not funding contributions for that month. So essentially, the income's going to be down, right? So we took four scenarios that we wanted to run. You'll see in all four scenarios, the only thing that's changing materially is the income, right? The expected claims, the administrative expenses, all of those different parts of the financial statements will remain the same for those four different scenarios. So we're only looking at the income level, which directly is going to affect the amount of trust money that is having to subsidize that amount that is not funded. So in scenario one, we just wanted to see what would it look like funding at the expected level, meaning what do we expect the expenses to be, and setting contributions at that amount and funding all the way through for five years, no premium holidays. So the two major things that that does not take into account, premium holidays and collective bargaining, right? Because we're not, we are setting it at expected, not at a locked-in rate for the next year and this year. Scenario two, all this, that's taking into account the collective bargaining. So it means we're, we're actually not going to fund it expected for the first two years, but then we're going to catch up year three through year five and be funding at expected level. Scenario three and four, those are going to take into account the premium holidays. But scenario three is at expected levels all the way through, and scenario four is the premium holidays, but incorporates that collective bargaining element. So scenario four is the most accurate picture of what you're planning to do at this point, meaning we have collective bargaining in place this year and next year, but additionally, we have scheduled premium holidays. So the next step we want to look at is the actuary went through and planned out those administrative expenses, expected claims, and then looked at the income and funding level. We want to look to see what that's going to do to the trust. So as Tim mentioned, the goal we want to be at is $18 million in trust, which is six months. Year five, we're projecting that the total expenses will be $36 million. So to have six months, essentially dividing it in half, we have the $18 million trust requirement of where we want to be at. You can look at the different results and see that scenario one, you're funding at expected. So if your trust starts out at $36 million and you're funding to expected, you end with $36 million. Pretty simple. But then scenario two, you'll see it starts to go down. Scenario three, even worse. But scenario four, which is the most accurate depiction of what we're hearing that is being planned, the trust would end in year five at about $6 million, 12 million short of that scenario that we want to really have, which is $18 million. Any questions? I know it's a lot of numbers, so, and I talk fast, so let me know. Is, is everybody there with me on that? Yes, ma'am?
Um, so just, I understand how these models are being worked out. Maybe you can add to this in a second. Um, this is basically, you said the only thing changing in these is how much everybody, right? Whether we take holiday.
Yes, ma'am. Whether the, how much the general fund is putting in as far as income. The expenses, everything remains the same. So your income's changing, which is going to change your trust because it's having to subsidize it.
Okay.
I, yes, sir. Well, we got two more examples we want to show, but I want to make sure that those four scenarios were good. So Tim and I, when we were talking about this, we wanted to be mindful that when it comes to financials, the last thing, if you see in the scenario two and four, you'll see that after year two, there is a substantial jump in amount of income being funded, right? It's going up, you know, 30% or so. You're having to jump up because you go from collective bargaining to funding at expected. It's a big gap. But realistically, when we're talking about premium holidays and we're talking about current versus expected rates, we're just talking about how much are we contributing each year, right? So we wanted to see what does it look like if we just have a very smooth, linear approach to contributing and seeing what it takes in year five to end at 18 million, but having it a more systematic approach instead of calling it premium holidays, instead of taking two or three months off and people aren't funding? What does it look like? So we modeled that up as well. And it's in the green packet, and I apologize. This is the, we wanted to bring the actuarial report, so it was independent, and, and we were just presenting that. But the PowerPoint, we took what the actuary had, but also put in our financial statements based on using those scenarios. So the last two pages of that, you'll see where year one and year two, those are going to follow exactly what scenario four is. The expenses, everything's the same, but it's also going to have an income funding level that's very similar to scenario four. But, but year three, four, and five, it was just a math game to try to see what will it take to have the smoothest linear uptake in contribution, but end where we want to end when it comes to the trust in year five. The next example we ran, just to see what it looked like, is plan design change. In year one and two, collective bargaining is in place. We know that the contributions, they are what they are. But year three, if we made an actuarial change of 10%, what would that look like? I'm sorry, 7% actuarial change to a plan design, meaning if you go from a $500 deductible to a 750 or a $1,000 deductible, that's an actuarial change that'll give you anywhere between 5 to 10%. Essentially, you're cost-shifting to people who are using the plan the most, but it's not affecting everyone's contribution rates. Whenever you make that change, two things happen. Now, you're not having to fund as much an income to break down to expected, but additionally, your trust requirement doesn't have to be at 18 million anymore because your plan expenses are not going to be 36 million in year five. So it's just another look to see what could a plan design change do, as well as just saying no premium holidays. But let's just look at what do we need to do for contributions to get to be, to where we feel we're solvent in year five? Yes, ma'am?
Can I clarify? I think, um, I think the, maybe my, my statement at first, you're talking about the ones that says hybrid model scenario.
Yes, ma'am. So it, it's the ones, uh...
It's got scenario, scenario four, the first year, scenario two, the second.
Uh, no, ma'am. Those are, those are the ones, uh, I'm sorry, I actually have, it's the last two pages, which says change in income is from general fund only. And then the year three, four, and five will be change in income is from general fund and employee and, or else coming from plan design. The first two examples, or the first example, the hybrid model, was one that we talked about where it's blending that scenario four and scenario two, year, to get another, just to see what it would do as well.
Thank you.
Yes?
Can I do it?
No, no questions?
Okay.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
So what we're looking at here is the change in year three. Um, you were saying this is, this is basically what we would need in order to come up with that 18 million reserve.
Yes, ma'am. The last two pages in here where it's the, the green change in income, that's where essentially I want to end where you have six months. So in the first one, you have to have 18 million. But if you made a plan design change, you wouldn't have to be at 18 million. You could be around 17 million.
Okay. Okay. And the plan design change would be, for example, you'd have to...
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, it doesn't have to be drastically changing to get 7% actuarially out of that. It can be 250 to $500 deductible change because it's so low, it doesn't take much movement to get that.
And, and I would, and I would say, that's probably more typical. What we see school districts actually doing today is actually changing their plan design because it impacts those that actually utilize the plan more, rather than the premium contribution that impacts everybody.
Okay. You go ahead.
That was, that was all I had right there.
That said, are you ready then to make a recommendation and enter into a general discussion?
Well, I think, I think what we're, what we're really suggesting is, is that approach where, again, year one and two, you're where you're going to be, but in year three, you begin to take a look at those plan design changes to actually change the funding to your plan and be less reliant on premium holidays. In fact, I might even suggest you not look at using any premium holidays after that.
After?
After year, after the second year. Correct.
And that's your recommendation, is that?
Well, I think, I, I think at this point in time, it would be, it would be yes. But it's also, and again, there are so many things, as you all know better than I do, that are going to change relative to how you all run the school district. Economics are going to change. And so I think that's why this is a pretty fluid process. It's something that we have to look at, I think, I believe, all the time. And, and if you were to use premium holidays, do you use them in, in a less number per year than, than what was contemplated? I think all that has to be taken into account. I don't think anything is static as it relates to this.
Okay. So before I open it up then to the board, Claudia or Superintendent Page, do you have any comments relative to Tim's last comments before we start?
No, I had this discussion with him, so my plan will reflect something there.
Okay. All right. Claudia, everything? Okay. We'll open it up to the board. Director DeSala.
Do you have a question?
500, 1,000?
500 for individual, 1,000?
1,000 for family, correct.
And I don't want to be too much, but what do they pay, what do they pay for? Do they pay anything at all?
Well, it's based on bargaining unit, quite frankly.
Do we have a standard?
Oh, probably, and Claudia can correct me if I'm wrong, about 7% maybe?
Would that be a standard?
Yeah. 7% correct.
On the third page of the PowerPoint, they do have noted in the bottom that the current rates are for single family, not premium, but...
For more? Well, this is an opportunity, we've got a mandate here to do it, and that's what Tim and I...
Kyle. Kyle.
...year four, and it's a great opportunity, I think, to stand your position. But we're going to have some discussions. We can have a few more questions and then back to you. Director Beth?
Um, has anyone talked to bargaining units, or has anybody kind of deal about bargaining or wanting to change in that, or increase in that one, um, after you've been...
Well, first of all, we have a contract starting in 2020, and that, and that time, again, is a different negotiating trial. Any other questions? Director DeSala?
So these rates on this PowerPoint that are listed, single family, that's...
That monthly. Monthly, but that's the full cost. So the school district's paying probably 90% of that.
So it's a 7%?
Mm-hmm.
So, did we...
If you want to be careful, I'll ask you.
Go ahead, yeah.
So, I appreciate everything you've done here, and I'm trying to interpret what I think you're saying. And I think you're saying, year one, year two, that is what it is, right? And I've tried also to think about a way to make it more even, rather than taking the holidays. I've always thought that was kind of a strange concept, from a whole perspective.
I've always thought that was kind of a strange concept, but we do it. And what it says to me is that we've been overfunding the fund. Is that correct? So, we've been able to take these holidays, the way I understand it, once or twice a year, depending on what we want to do, by not funding that premium for a month or two months. Is that correct?
If, if you weren't using premium holidays, you would be able to lower the individual monthly rate because actually what you're doing is you're giving three or two, or whatever the number is per year, it's free.
Right, right. So, and I think that's what, Kyle, you were saying, that in the future, that's kind of what you're suggesting, is getting to something that is more, um, actual, right?
Exactly.
And so, so our total costs must be right at twenty-four million, which would be two million per month approximately. Is that correct?
Currently?
Yes.
No, it's actually higher.
Your, your cost this year, your total, uh, total cost will be somewhere around twenty-nine million.
Twenty-nine million, okay. Uh, so, um, what I was wondering was to implement something like this. If we implemented a plan, a five-year plan, which the superintendent is going to explain here in a little bit, how much time do you need to change the plan? So, we would have to make decisions sometime in order for you to make changes to the plan and the premiums and all that. How does that work timewise?
Well, we, we are looking at this, quite frankly, all the time as we get monthly reports, and I think we, we talk, well, how did things go? The best time to do that is probably begin a year in advance. Now would be the time to start planning for the nineteen-twenty year. And, and you will have a renewal. You're, you've really just started your new plan here, you're, you're really a quarter and two months. You're not quite halfway through your, through this next year. Now is the time to begin planning for the nineteen-twenty year and beyond. So, if you want a five-year plan, now, now would be the time to start planning a five-year plan.
And that's what I'm thinking. There are a lot of questions, as, as Director Beck asked, a lot of people that, that are involved, and, and so, we would need to have those discussions, although some of it may be just, that's the way it is, especially with respect to the holidays. There was one other question I had. Oh, I was thinking about the numbers you presented, and you said individually, um, you're committed to two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand per person, right? And then, I think you said you had an aggregate of a hundred-and-twenty-five percent. And I wondered if you had the information, I was just curious. How often have we been over, uh, two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand? Say, in the past three or five years, something like that?
Oh.
Just guessing if you can.
Yeah, and that's actually changed, that's actually changed over the years. It hasn't always been two, it's two-twenty-five now. The district had the ability that, because they had good experience and they did not have a, have a lot of claimants, that's actually transitioned, I want to say, over the last four years from a hundred-and-ninety thousand up to two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. Uh, and do the, for taking on that additional risk, you pay actually less fixed cost and premium because you're taking on, on the more risk. Ballpark number, probably about two a year.
Two a year, okay. Okay, great, thank you.
Some years, you've actually not had any. And because of that, and I'm back to the, the statement that I made before, the contract that you have with Sun Life today is a no-laser contract, but it's also a premium dividend, just like you see sometimes in car insurance. If you don't have an accident, they, you recoup some of that.
Right.
And the district has gotten some of their premium back as well. So, it's, you've had very, very good experience.
Yeah, and I know you've reported that in past years, and I've actually missed you recently, Tim. And I don't know, because I don't, I don't recall the last time that you made a report.
It's, it's been a little while.
Yeah, it seems like it's been a while. Um, the one last question that I had, so, we are going to have to go to the SBRC and represent this. And we have to represent it with strength, fidelity, whatever it takes. And, and I wrote somewhere here, the way I wanted to ask the question, but basically, we're going to represent what you said, and we have to represent it to the extent that the SBRC will accept it. And, and so, my question is, as I think about this, I go, Tim's a good guy, and Kyle seems to be a good guy, and I've never met you before. And I know that, that the superintendent and Claudia will represent this, but, um, oh, here's the question. Can we, the board, tell the SBRC that this approach, if we make the decision, is sustainable?
What, what I would have do, Dr. Tate, we, and Claudia, we talked about this afterwards. The scenarios that we modeled up on our own, we will send back out to an independent actuary again and have them substantiate it, and make sure that you have a stamp from an independent actuary on these numbers before you go to the SBRC.
Okay, that's all I got. Director DeSalvo, did you come up with your questions? Okay, anybody else?
I, I would say...
Oh, go ahead.
After you get that, um, we'll be off.
Okay, well, it looks like we're done with our discussion. Is there anything more that, that you need discussed here with Tim and Kyle?
No, except I'd like you to stay if the board asks a question about my...
Sure.
Okay, uh, thank you very much for that presentation. We'll move on to the Vision 2020 update. Superintendent Tate?
So, the update actually includes... The update actually includes two plans, a Plan A and a Plan B. And the changes from the original Vision 2020 are noted in the columns where I even either show that I've added something or that I have changed something. And the difference in the A and the B is whether you would consider closing a school and attendance center or not. Beyond that, they're exactly the same. We have worked very hard to try to think of every possible reduction that we can come up with in order to provide something that makes sense towards the future for the district, something that's sustainable, and it's a good foundation for budgeting, and also, quite frankly, that will get the School Budget Review Committee to actually grant a suspending authority that we need for the negative unspent balance. The difference also in both Plans A and B, from what I had presented before, is the number of insurance holidays. I have kept three insurance holidays for this school year coming, eighteen nineteen. I kept two insurance holidays for nineteen-twenty, and I actually put a, another two in twenty and twenty-one, and I have zero insurance holidays for the next two, based on just the general approach of the actuary study and what was presented tonight. You can consider interchangeable with an insurance holiday. For example, when you get in, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two, or even twenty, twenty-one, is insure, uh, actually plan design changes and employee contributions. In other words, as they were pointing out, you could actually make those amounts of money by making those particular changes. So, I probably will modify this to, say, insurance holidays and/or plan changes or contributions from employees. And then, you will have to help me work out and see those numbers if they, they do turn out. Some of the new things that I've added here is a five percent reduction in department and school site budgets and reducing overtime. We, um, spend about a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars on overtime every year. We're just going to cut it out, and that's where we would save a hundred thousand. Uh, you can see a hiring freeze, and you'll see that in several years. The hiring freeze talks about the list that I gave you of one-point-five million dollars in reduction. That's the hiring freeze. We just won't hire unless we consider every position, but those positions will actually be on for reduction through attrition. The net from that is about a million dollars because knowing you've cut some of those positions out, you're going to need to have some help to assist with the functions themselves. You can see, if you go in nineteen-twenty, three percent reduction departments. Um, prioritizing the MAG budget, we have the modified allowable growth budget that we're spending for at-risk. There are legal things you can do to take some of the things out of, uh, of that budget and pay for it with, uh, general funds, but we'll have to prioritize the list and reduce some of the things we're doing from the MAG budget. But I think we can find a hundred thousand from that. In several years, you'll find the phase-in of outsourcing. I have said several times that what I'm going to do is put out a letter of interest to invite people to send in interest letters about outsourcing any of our services and functions. I'm being non-precise, I'm not suggesting which jobs because we may be very surprised on some of the outsourcing that's available. So, my intention is to put something out, uh, in August and start getting those replies in September, and then start seeing if we have some serious, um, possibilities, and then put out an RFP. But from that, why do I say phasing in? Because I'm sure that what we will want to do, if we do any outsourcing at all, is to phase it in so our employees don't lose their jobs, and that would be by attrition. So, um, I'm, I'm thinking that probably two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars a year is a good estimate on just how that phase-in might go. Um, you can see combining principals, so we take some of our smaller schools. Instead of having two principals, you have one. Um, increasing class size, and we're doing it this year in K-one and two, but I'm suggesting we do it K through twelve and years nineteen and twenty, and then twenty and twenty-one. So, those are new. Um, so, if you go on to the next budget, twenty-twenty-one, um, you can see the new additions. One of the major ones is converting from block to traditional scheduling of the three high schools. We have talked about that for years. Uh, we've been unable to get agreement to do that, but in year twenty-twenty-one, um, provided that our chapter twenty provisions don't change back, then you will be able to make that decision. So, I'm recommending that you do, in fact, do that. And then, again, you see increased class size. When we get to twenty-one-twenty and twenty-two-twenty-three, there's very little we have left. We still have our energy efficiencies because as we're investing the money in whatever kind of efficiencies you decide upon, that then our accrual of efficiencies and money saved will continue. And then, early retirements through those days, so there's really no changes. I think it's very critical, and I really appreciate this actuary report, to understand that we can't rely continually on the holidays we've been taking. So, this gives us, gives us a guideline, uh, the next two years, and then, again, looking at year three on whether it's an insurance holiday or if it's some sort of employee contribution and a plan design change. And then, Plan B is a repeat, except it doesn't give you, it does not have reducing a school, and the major change is, when you get to school year twenty-two-twenty-three, you have a zero ending balance of spending authority. The plan before you had a one million dollar. This is going to change every year, but we have to realize our recommended, um, spending authority that's unexpended is eight million dollars. That's what we've been used to aim towards, and we kept going down and down with that. So, the difference in the two funds is how much you have left at the very end, which is your unspent balance. So, that's my report, and I'm ready for questions or comments.
Could you, um, talk a little bit about schedule? The information you need or the, the direction you need and when you need it from the board before we get into the discussion?
You're talking about block scheduling change?
No, no, I'm talking about leading up to October, the presentation to the SBRC, because we've only got, what, six weeks or whatever it is, eight weeks till then?
So, we need the last meeting in August, I think it's the twenty-seventh, to get you to approve our presentation to the School Budget Review Committee. They require that in September. So, that's the last chance you'll have to approve that. So, what we'll be providing is, uh, the cover letter. We'll provide whatever plan you have decided upon as our reduction targets, and you'll have to approve that. If you're going to close a school, you have to remember you need to take that, but the first vote on that on the tenth of September. If you're not going to close a school, it's a matter of, again, giving us enough, um, guidance and authority on what we present in the way of a budget to the School Budget Review Committee. So, that'll be August twenty-seventh.
So, there's a lot of, of dates in there, and we need to come up with at least a pretty good idea of where we're headed tonight, then?
Well, by consensus, if you, a, a major discussion would be, are you going to continue to look at closing a school or not? Not a vote, it's just a consensus. Uh, if I walked away hearing, "Never ever," um, then we'd go a different direction. If you're still ambivalent as a board, then you probably need a couple more meetings to discuss that.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Um, is there any discussion on the presentation that the superintendent has made? Director Beck?
I guess, I'm trying to figure out where the plans that we've gotten or we've talked about already fit in. So, where we discussed, um, you know, Plans A through D, closing the school versus that school versus that school. And then, um, we've introduced the idea of consolidating, right, to a K-eight model. But we don't have quite all the details on that one yet. How do those fit into what you are presenting here?
Well, if you go with Plan B, if the board tonight said, "We definitely still need to close an attendance center of school," then you need some more meetings, probably in August, to look at all those options again. I mean, they are complete. We did give you the, uh, the complete information on the idea of K-through-eights with Monroe and Smart and Adams and Williams. So, you now have that, it's, it's on the website. So, that's, that's how it fits in. If, in fact, you come away and say, "We're, we're going to find some other way, uh, we don't want to close the school," then those are mute.
Any other discussion? Director Mayfield?
Every number there is a what-if. It's our best guess. Some will come under, some will go over. Uh, the School Budget Review Committee understands that also. I mean, it's always that way. Nearest we have is the last... Nearest we have is the last budget. We know, you know, as we close a school out, school year out, we know. But you're right, every single one of them is a guess. It's our best guess. We've been conservative, meaning we think that it may be the least we can save in the cases, but I can't on any one of them say that's what's going to happen. We're clear if we say we're gonna combine principals, I know we're gonna save about that amount. The one point five million dollars, if those positions aren't there, you will save a net of one million dollars because we know what those people make. But if you're looking at energy efficiencies, absolutely right. Five percent reduction department budget, those are solid. The bell times to reduce routes, three hundred thousand, best guess. You've asked us, let's keep up with that, let's see how it's going, and we certainly will. So, yeah, some of them are just our best guesses. Reducing substitutes, we're just gonna reduce that budget by three hundred thousand. That's a certainty. Then we have to work that out in the schools, how we're gonna do that.
Director Hayes?
For the miscellaneous reductions, what are some of the things that are included in that?
Some of those are included when we talk about closing a school, assuming we would sell that property, we wouldn't have the utility costs, maintenance, those types of things. Other miscellaneous can be reducing, other things in the buildings, like related to something as straightforward as copy machine usage, that type of thing.
With the early retirement, on basically just an estimate with these figures, what are you looking to have? About how many employees is that figured on? How many retiring each year?
The eight sixteen is actual because that's the early retirements we just realized from the last school year. And I don't know if, do you know a number in mind? These are Marcia questions. She's not here, so we'll get better at that, but we'll look that up and, okay, I mean, I mean, it's gonna be a combination of the sort of folks, too, but, yeah, we'll find out, give you a better idea.
Okay, thank you.
Director DeSalvo?
It's quite simply, at the end of the five-year plan, you'd have a million dollars unspent balance, and if you don't close the school, I mean, the estimate is a zero balance.
So we're still searching for a million dollars?
I don't know how the SBRC is gonna look at this. They may say, no, you need five million dollars of unspent balance. I don't know that. I mean, again, tonight, hearing how much can we get from changing our health plan and from employee contribution, what's realistic to look for, what is fair, what's respectful? That's a lot of things we need to think about, but that could change some of the equations. And I'm out of ideas.
Anything else? We do need to, to offer some guidance on the issue, especially of closing a school. And in the past, we have, we've expressed a lot of things. But leading up to all these dates and the superintendent needs decisions by, I think you said, the first part of September, or no, the end of August.
Right, August twenty-seventh.
Right, so we're a couple of weeks away from having to make decisions on this, and we need some more discussion, advocacy for which way are we gonna go as a board? And we're missing one board member, but there has to be more discussion, especially on that. Where do we want to go? Where do we want to go as we prepare to make this presentation to the SBRC? How much do we want in unspent balance? So Superintendent, I apologize, Director DeSalvo?
But this reflects our best guess on where we're gonna be.
You'd like, you want a microphone?
I'll just stay where I'm at at this.
Okay.
That would be where I'm leaning at this moment with some high-level information. I would be an advocate of Plan B, but I say that not knowing if I'll be in this chair when this could come up again, what do we have to think about?
Oh, and certainly, that's something that every board member should be thinking about. Is there any additional discussion? We need some.
Could be the HR department, could be the finance department. It could be our technology department. I mean, we don't know. That's what we're kind of interested in, see who has an interest. And let's say that somebody decided they're gonna take over the finance department, and there is fifteen employees, then we would hope that they'd have a plan so by attrition they would take over. So the first year somebody left and they would hire employees under their new salary rate, their new benefit rate, whatever it is. I mean, this is typical. You can see it done like this. So it, and again, I'm not suggesting what departments. We'll just have to wait and see who they come through with. But there's probably no department or no function that would be free of the possibility of getting outsourced, maybe even the superintendency. Someone's got a great idea how to do that, so we'll just have to wait and see.
Anybody else? Director Potts?
When we started down this path, we talked about the physical capacity we have in the district. I don't know that Plan B changes or addresses that issue. We still have too much square footage for our enrollment. We have too many classrooms, too many seats. I don't see how that changes by, if Plan B doesn't address that. I just see that, you know, who wants to close a school? Nobody. But that's not reality, I don't think. I think we need, and I think we came up with a plan that sort of closes a school and moves them to another school. I like that idea. But I don't, I don't know that, that we won't be sitting here in less than five years and then going all through this again, going to all those meetings at the auditoriums and just sitting there thinking, geez, why the heck did I run for this job? They don't even talk to me in the grocery store anymore. But sometimes I think we have to do things we don't want to do because in the long run, it's for the betterment, it's in the long run, it's the best financial decision, and it's the best decision for the district as a whole.
So would you, would you make a statement on which direction you would be inclined to go? Okay, all right, thank you. Any additional discussion? Director Hayes?
I totally understand with that because it's, on the surface would appear, as in Plan B, that we're literally just kicking a can down the road once again. But I guess when you think about all the open forums that we've had, all of the students and the response from parents, teachers, everyone that we've heard about this, from this, I think overall, the community, we are a district of distinction. We do have, you know, very clear needs in the district, but I almost feel that we somehow owe the community as well, and if we could work together and keep a school open and, you know, save in the ways that we have put together here, that we may be okay. I'm okay, I'm more with Plan B.
Director Beck?
Well, I'm looking back at the original School Budget Review Committee proposal, and the numbers, the savings we were talking about were even multiple millions per year. And I guess I'm trying to wrap my head around how that matches with what we're talking about now, whereas the plans we're looking at, so we're talking about savings of, depending on what happens, we had, what, six and a half million projected for the first year and down to three million. And what we're talking about now is a difference of eight hundred thousand to a million dollars in savings, Plan A versus Plan B. And so, given what Director Hayes just said, kind of took the words out of my mouth, I am very concerned about kicking the can down the road, but on the other hand, I think as a community, you know, what we've heard from the community is that we should think out of the box and find the option that disrupts the least number of people who are in the places that can't handle disruption or that have already been disrupted. So I would be more inclined to go with Plan B at this point and not close a school. I know it was kind of my proposal, but I, I'm one of those people who sometimes says that maybe investment is the best way to fix the problem. I guess nothing in the plans that we've talked about really satisfies me in terms of how to deal with declining enrollment. We still are gonna have a problem with declining enrollment, and it's, we're losing people in the high school level, we've got lots of kids coming in at elementary school, and so I, I think it doesn't matter what we pick, if we don't work on that issue, where it doesn't matter which plan we pick, we're still gonna be looking at this again in a few years, whether or not it's five or three or two or whatever. But given all those things, I am more inclined to go with Plan B.
Okay, thank you. Director Mayfield, I've interpreted where you are, but would you like to make a statement on where you are relative to AMB?
Well, you know, I would like to close a school. To me, the best plan is always one we would want to close. But at the same time, there are to be some change about it. The best change from my perspective is to draw people here. We have not been able to do that in the last ten, fifteen years. We have to look at that and say, why? This didn't happen all of a sudden, as this Beck said. No matter what we do now, if we don't turn that around, we're still gonna be in the same situation, whether you're talking five years, ten years, fifteen years. The other thing that would concern me, regardless of which plan is used, is that we have to look at how it affects people. If we're sending certain kids from elementary, should I say, sixth grade to junior high schools, and what it's going to do to the high schools is make sure that our kids are being spread out over the city and not just concentrated in one or two schools. Because that in itself can have an effect on the deterioration of our schools in the future. People want negative in schools. They can't have that. They have a tendency to move where they can get them. I would definitely, in those circumstances, go with B, as I've always been to have to try and keep our schools open. But there has to be a way to do that and make that happen. I don't think, none of us is gonna stick to our guns unless we have a pathway to make that happen. And how do we do that? We need to figure that out.
Anything else? Director DeSalvo?
I would just continue on the path that, you know, Dr. Tate, his, and his staff loves to have, absorb it, come out of time, come in together with him. But I think we can never stop there, I'm saying, you know, fight and work. If we're looking, we're chasing down hopefully about a million dollars, I think we can get there. Again, we've created, continuing to do that, watching over, really go closer, putting at these things continually, not that we haven't always done that, but I think if we continue to do that, we could, we could give them a bound habit of process. In fact, that's what I challenge with my, I mean, all to, we've got to stay in joint of, we can't do this, sorry, I'm, I'm just, unfortunately, we don't have the responsibility.
Anything else? Of course, I've got a few comments, and they're all over my paper. I don't know if I'll be able to, to organize them properly. One of the things I was thinking about is that I've been on the board longer than, at least currently, everybody here. And Director Mayfield, you were on the board previously, and I don't know, so you've been on the board maybe a longer time. I don't know how it works. But anyway, I will tell you that the boards have consistently kicked the can down the road, and it's disheartening to me as a board member because I think that kicking the can down the road has been part of what's gotten us to the position that we're in. The, the SBRC, so I attended two of the last three meetings before the meeting that was just held a month ago or whatever, and I don't recall the dates. But I will tell you that the SBRC, from my perspective, sitting in the front with the superintendent and with the CFO, and having the SBRC out here and one person in particular asking me if I knew what the heck I was doing as a board member, was, it was very challenging. And, and my sense is that the SBRC, they hammered us on the actuarial report. And in fact, one of my questions, Superintendent Tate, was whether that report, do you interpret that it was only with respect to the insurance holidays or was it with respect to the whole presentation to the SBRC?
Just the insurance holidays.
Okay, and my interpretation was that it was for everything. The difference between zero and one million, you're right, it's, I don't think it's inconsequential, but it's small. But I think that the difference between zero and eight million, which is where we're supposed to be, right? And the difference between one million and eight million is significant. And so I- And so, I think that as a board, we should be looking to the future. And I think trying to scrape by is not the right way. I do believe that making decisions now, as, as I think even about the next election, which will be, uh, next fall, um, and I think about that board as it wrestles with all of this, um, because that board will have to deal with all of these future years. And I think that it's going to be such an incredible challenge if we decide to put our goal at zero, um, and I think, is that on the last page here? Yeah, or in Plan B, the anticipation is ending balance, spending authority is zero. I think that's an incredibly low, uh, goal. And I think that at least the million is doable. I agree that nobody likes to close a school. But I also believe that the administration has looked at virtually everything. We have, the community has, there are, there are a lot of issues, uh, to deal with. But I feel very strongly, well, wait a minute, let me see here if there's anything else I need. Oh, I wanted to talk about the, um, couple of comments that were made about declining enrollment and what we need to draw people here. And I will say that this plan has to be presented in October, a couple of months away. And if it has been fifteen or twenty years or however long it's taken us to get to the point that we are, I, I have a hard time imagining that our board and that our administration could have a viable, um, position relative to enrollment and how we would change that and that they would be able to present it to the SBRC in a manner that this is going to be the way that we will get back to where we should be financially. One of the things that I did want to talk about briefly is the voluntary desegregation plan, which I think was developed in the seventies sometime, I, I don't remember the history exactly. But the state, or no, it was Supreme Court, United States Supreme Court decision that came down probably, whatever, ten or twelve years ago. And they said you cannot use race as a sole determining factor in determining where a student should go, which is, in our original voluntary desegregation, we had at least two, um, methods of determining. But our lawyers and the administration said, take race out of the equation, and we did, and we made a diversity plan. And that diversity plan, although it's been modified once, I think, since, since we made that plan, I think it was modified three or four years ago. However, I think it was this year in the legislature that it was considering eliminating the possibility of that diversity plan. I believe that if that happens, it is going to put an incredible hurt on this whole district. I think that removing that diversity plan disallows us from doing some of the things that we do. And I think that that would make, it would exacerbate, I believe, our enrollment issues. And I'm just mentioning it as I think about all these things, and we can't predict what the legislature is going to do. But it felt like, it felt to me like they were moving in on it this year. And so, I wouldn't be surprised if that's something that happens, uh, in the near future. Go ahead. It, that's a part of it, right? Yeah, that's, it's, it's actually open enrollment that allows them to move to another district. We, we're one of four or five districts in the state that has a diversity plan that changes the way that the open enrollment in the state is administered in our district. So, I'm, I'm strongly, um, not in support of Plan B. And I, I believe that there has to be strong consideration given to your Plan A. With that being said, um, the consensus of the board is that there were four board members that expressed a preference for Plan B and two that expressed a preference for Plan A. And I believe that, um, consensus then of the board is to pursue Plan B. Even if Director Gosa was here, it wouldn't change the consensus. So, I think that's about it. Is there anything else, uh, you need?
We'll still have a forum on September fifth.
Right. Right. Uh, Director Beck?
Um, so just add curiosity.
So, just to be clear, I mean, so that whole issue is off the table as far as the administration's consideration. The vote, when we take the vote, who knows what will happen, but the administration will not be preparing any additional information on repurposing a school or closing a school or anything. It's really just looking at Plan B according to consensus, the way it is right now. Director Mayfield? I'm not sure what's your question, where you're getting at?
At one time. None or the other, we can't do it if that's what the board chooses to do, if it helps us reduce, uh, the cost that we're looking for.
Well, I-
Might displace, the big thing with me is displacing kids from neighborhoods.
And, and I understand, but that's a little different than repurposing a school. And, and I think that the administration and especially the superintendent have been looking for, if the board, for instance, were to advocate that position. But what I heard the board tonight say is that it definitely did not want to, we said close a school, but I believe the interpretation is repurposing a school.
Well, the only reason I said that- -is we have as a board, we should decide to include it or have any changes in it. And I understand the plan as it's been described, but none of these plans are absolute that I know of yet.
They will be absolute. Later on this month, in a few weeks, we will agree to support a, a plan because this is going to go to the SBRC. And so, we don't have a lot of time to mess around with it. If this is something, and, and you could ask the question, I think the board has the right, of course, to do any of these things. If that, I think that plan originally of repurposing Monroe, if I recall, after everything was going to save around eight hundred grand. And if that's something that the board wanted to do, I think that the board could express that. But I, I haven't heard that tonight. And I think all that's happening is that the superintendent intends to prepare the plan for us to, for the board to approve in a few weeks based on the information that, uh, that we're giving tonight. So, if, if that's something that is strong, strongly supported or, or a consensus position, then the board would have to express that. Okay? Director Hayes?
So, basically, in order to consider the consolidation, we would have to say that we're more in favor of Plan A versus Plan B? Okay.
And then take that as your choice.
Okay, so it would be a Plan A with the consolidation of the schools specifically?
If that's your choice, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Director Beck? Superintendent Tate?
You need to recognize, in the consolidation, when you look at the factor considerations, there are children in the neighborhood who will not go to those schools.
I realize that.
And they're mainly Jefferson students.
I realize that.
Who'll have to go to other schools. So, as long as, I mean, uh, Director Mayfield said, as long as the students can stay in their neighborhood, well, they can't when you consolidate.
Right.
There's not enough room.
It's a compromise between moving all the students to a different elementary school versus moving some of the students to a different elementary school or intermediate school, right? And so, I'm trying to figure out a way that we s- don't end up in this situation in a few years, but also disrupt the fewest number of students. And I realize we're going to have to move some students, it's just the way it is if we go with that. That happens. And I'm not happy about it, but to me, this is, this is a compromise. We're saving, if we can save eight hundred thousand dollars, that's very close to a million dollars. It's not zero. And so, I would advocate for that.
Superintendent Tate is there?
That's Plan A. Plan A gives you the option to pick one of those five options. But I, I want to caution you that I heard a lot of comments at public forums about any changes you make in that neighborhood would be detrimental to the, the neighborhood character and that, um, and, and the city's revitalization plans. And I just want to remind you of that, um, as you consider it. And again, that is Plan A, and, and I guess you need to take another consensus and say, do you want to keep that on? Then your decision's got to be in the next couple of weeks, is that the choice you're going to make? And you can still say no. You could still say no in a couple of weeks, but that's Plan A.
I appreciate your, your comments, Director Beck, um, and your thoughtfulness. Even with that though, although that may be a shift in everything if Director Gosa was here, however, he hasn't been part of this discussion, and it's going to be hard to get, um, hard for us to get any sort of, of way to weigh in other than at a meeting. So, with that, excuse me, um, is there any additional discussion? Uh, Director DeSalvo?
I would have to go back. I think there was a mention of a attendance center. Yeah, which is closed schooling. Yeah, without specifics, yeah.
So, when you go again, how specific do you think? I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to hide anything or bury anything, but I, I think it would be wrong. And I, I don't, I don't want to say this is going to be it. We're going to get there, just to tell me to know. There's a lot of things that could come in over or under what we're thinking.
Yeah.
So, I'm, I'm curious of how specific they're expecting us to say, you know, we think we're going to end up with a million and unspent authority or zero. I mean, how, how specific are we going to make it be? Because that's a school, that is a school right there.
Yeah, no, I wouldn't need to be specific. The specificity has to come in by ten, September tenth. If you're going to close a school, whether you call it consolidated or not, there'll be one less school on our inventory. That's what they look at. Uh, I don't have to be specific to them, but you do by September tenth. If you're going to do it for the following year.
Which, when we do, maybe we don't.
Yeah.
And I don't want to kick the can down the road either, but if, if we don't do it and we get some more data, we get some more information, we get some more information, if we realize we don't have to do it, maybe it's going to come up again, but we continue to drill, to drill and drill and get information there, maybe we're not kicking it down the road, maybe we find a way to eliminate it.
Well, one of the things we're trying to do is, is not keep the community at bay. Again, I, I'm hearing things back here from the crowd that maybe there's some positive feeling about that, which surprises me. But I didn't hear that from community members, I didn't hear it from the city. So, maybe you could say, you know, we are going with the Plan B, but we're going to study more about the consolidation to see. Because again, there's, there's a lot to be said about the students that wouldn't be able to go there who normally would. We need to see how they feel about it. But I think the community need to know that you're sensitive to their feelings, sensitive to their opinions. And there has been talk about can the community get involved in this? Well, it'd be a way the community could to study that. Would that be a wise thing to do? And with that, you could also study what would happen to Monroe if there weren't students in there at the same time. So, we could tell the SBRC, although we don't have a school closing on here, we're still, the community is still looking at the possibility, would that be a wise decision? So, I, I'm, I'm, I don't know if that would satisfy you. We're not taking it off, we're, we're saying that's something we have to study more closely. And I think that the community believes that you listen to them, and the community believes that you're not going to take a position that's completely opposite of everything they believe in, and that you will work with them to see, is that a wise decision? And I could all tell the SBRC, there's an eight hundred thousand that's out there we're uncertain about, but, and that could impress them. That'd be my recommendation to go forward like that.
I want to comment on the SBRC because I don't believe they will be impressed by it. I believe, I believe that they will simply reject it. Yes. And, and I hold that based on, on my experiences with the SBRC over the past couple of years. And so, because what I've been, what I believe, and Director DeSalvo, you viewed that last SBRC meeting.
It was awful.
Which was awful. And, and I believe that they will simply hold us accountable and say, you guys still haven't done enough. And we're nowhere near the eight million even after five years. And, and so, the, the responsibilities, and I would advocate, in fact, I'll, I'll- And, and so, the, the responsibilities, and I would advocate, in fact, I'll, I'll ask Mary to, um, get a copy of our responsibilities, but we have, we, the board, have certain responsibilities. And one of the primary ones is fiscal responsibility. And, and so, I just, if, if, so the SBRC has the option then, Superintendent Tate, but it won't be till October. So, if we make this decision in this month, we will not have the opportunity to change an attendance center next year, because we will miss that September 10th date, correct?
That's true.
So, so we just go ahead and risk it with the SBRC, that they will go ahead and accept it or reject it. And if they reject it, as they have the last two, right, that we've presented, then we will have to either come up with a plan, or they will come up with a plan. Is that kind of right, or?
That's the way I understand it.
And so, if they come up with a plan, it really doesn't matter what we think, I believe. Um, and, and as I've mentioned before, the, the SBRC has incredible authority. Um, and there have been, um, occasions in the state that have been absolutely horrible. When the department, I think it's actually the department that makes the decision, uh, if it's going to be, and the department would come in and, and take over, I believe, for the board, um, and make these decisions. So, I just, I just want to make sure that the board is completely, that we really understand it, because we're going down the road of saying, nope, we are not going to change any attendance centers. We will think about it, and we'll tell the SBRC that we will think about it, and we'll roll the dice and see what they say. I think that's what we're saying, right? Okay. All right. So, I just want to make sure I've characterized this properly for the administration. If that's it, is there any other discussion on this issue? All right. Well, and is there anything else that you need to say about Vision 2020?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Thank you very much for that presentation. Uh, thank you, uh, Tim and Kyle, thank you for your presentations. And with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.